I'd like to call a meeting to order for the selectmen for November 16, 2020, in Stanford Pledge Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, and to the Constitution of America, which stands firmly in our nation under God, in the visible liberty of justice, for all.
So further notice to comply with RSA 91A, the state of emergency, Governor's orders, restrictions on public gatherings, the town is limiting attendance in public meetings to conform with current social distancing guidelines. The town will also continue to offer remote access for those that cannot attend or wish to remain home. To remotely attend the meetings, audio and video, visit our website, www.alton.northampton.gov. On the day of the meeting, for instructions or telephone the selectmen's office at (603) 875-2113, or (603) 875-0229. There continues to be no public input at this time. Make it approval of the agenda or any additions?
This is Vice Chairman. And I'd like to just add one thing to new business, selectmen, public at meetings.
I get.
I move to approve the agenda as amended.
A second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Emergency management update.
Did you have anything planned, or?
I didn't know it.
I think it was probably on there, just wasn't.
Okay, we'll go right to announcements. Town offices will be closed on Thursday and Friday, November 26th and 27th, for the Thanksgiving holiday. And submission of public questions, ring, none. No appointments. New business, Alton Business Association, approval of wreath donations.
You can speak to that. So, the request is to approve the donation of a large wreath on the front of the town hall. That's basically what is donated from the ABA to the town. It was to have been put up the day before Thanksgiving, but the ABA did not have enough people to meet with ArborTech to do that here, so they had to do it Friday, this past Friday. So you'll notice it, it's up there, but you still need to accept the donation.
Did I read in that that they also finally want to decorate this tree in front of the town hall?
Great, great.
The lights are on it.
Yeah. It looks good.
Okay.
Make it a motion to accept the donation.
Make a motion to accept the donation from the Alton Business Association.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All in favor?
Thank you.
Selectmen's, public at meeting, Bob.
Yes, watching television, learning about this virus, it's increasing, it's on its second round. I think we possibly should be looking at going back to a old schedule of no public attendance at our public selectmen's meetings. It's pretty hard to control 10, that's what the state guidelines are, I believe, is 10.
They kind of pulled back on that, they said as long as you can distance.
Yeah.
But they're really talking about 10, because they're on television.
I think we should be setting an example with this spike. And I'm the last one, I was the first one here to want a public input, public to come to the meetings. I'll have to admit, I probably jumped the gun. We were having a decline nationwide, statewide, in the town of Colbrook, we've been lucky here, but it's increasing. And I don't like recommending it, but I think it's something we should consider.
We're increasing here, too.
Then the fire chief give us a number here in town?
So the last update I got, there's 15 cases in town, and they're not all clustered together, there's a couple that are clustered together, but the rest of them are kind of spaced out, so that doesn't necessarily give us good contact tracing, so we're not really able to tell how they got it, if it's community-based, if they traveled, or where they're at. Department of Health and Human Services has pulled back on how much contact tracing they're going to do because of how many cases there are in the state now, they just can't keep up with it. So they're trying to focus on really what's going to prevent spread the most.
Is this something that the board would like me to take to the emergency management team meeting this Wednesday to?
That's what I was going to ask.
For a quick, okay.
For a review before we make a decision now, actually speak with the emergency team, I think would be a good idea.
Why can't one of us make that meeting?
Get their recommendations.
Wednesday, next meet?
Wednesday.
Wednesday at 1?
This Wednesday?
This Wednesday at 1:30. Yeah, and I mean, if you're okay, if everyone is like a general consensus in agreement with that, I'm sure the EMT could set that as.
Yeah, I mean, we want to, we're going to move to whatever's going to make you guys feel safest. Obviously, like he said, setting the example is probably important, as well as doing what's going to be safe for you and everybody in the building.
Correct.
As cases increase, he's right.
I don't know.
Something that needs to be discussed.
Yeah.
That's with the board, Bill?
Yeah.
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Thank you. One of us, we could ask the chairman when he comes in if he's available, if not, one of us can attend.
And if not, there are two EMT members here, and we can certainly relay it to the others and get things taken care of for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good. On to old business. Fire department and water department fence project.
So, as you guys remember, we brought it up before, we only had one quote. So I took some time and kind of chased a couple other companies down. Another company actually came in and did another measurement. Two companies besides Lowe's were able to quote it out, and being fence companies, they were just a little more expensive. One thing I can say, if you go with either one of the fence companies, it's one person. If something goes wrong with the fence, you go back to the fence company, you say, hey, come fix it. Otherwise, we go through Lowe's, and Lowe's either contacts the subcontractor they use, or they pull in another subcontractor to fix it. It's chain-linked with privacy slats, it's nothing real fancy, so it's not.
It's not rocket.
Yeah, it's not like we're going to need a whole ring engineered fence if something goes wrong, we just, somebody comes up and fixes it, so.
So you're both recommending Lowe's?
That's the lowest price.
Right.
Pardon?
No, by far, it's the lowest price.
You feel comfortable with their interview, and they did everything properly, they looked at everything, they understood what they were bidding on, they knew what they were two different areas, so.
Sitting right here.
It seems like it is, I'm just asking your.
They were very responsible right at the beginning, too, they were able to come right in. The real question is, are they still going to have time to get it done before the ground freezes?
Did they give?
And that, I don't know.
Did you ask them what their time limit was if they were chosen?
They did not, I'm saying, they just kind of said, once they figure it out, they kind of schedule their subcontractor, so it depends on how busy it goes on.
I quote, Lowe's was back in.
Yeah, a couple months ago.
Yeah.
We were able to file in there without pushing it onto them.
Without stepping on the chief's feet, I personally would not like to see it done this year, if we can appropriate the funds for next year, just because now, we're still late in the year. And I have a lot of projects going on, and I'm already talking. I mean, if we had to get it done, absolutely, but, you know, we're getting down to crunch time now. Now, we got these quotes in September, came to you guys, and they still were the lowest. I suppose if we talk to them, and they can be prompt and fit us in, I don't know if they have projects, it'd be worth getting them, but if it's going to be, you know, you're looking into, you got the holiday coming up, so that's, now you're getting into the first of December, it might be better off to, especially, I mean, you know, you're drilling into cold ground to get those fence posts in there, concrete curing, if that's what they're using, I'm not a fence person, but, not a fence expert, but it might be better to take it on.
And that may be their recommendation, too, at this point, I'm sure, if it goes into December, it just might.
Right, at that time, it's much easier to reason, cold temperatures or anything like that, they may have changed.
Do you think the price would stay the same?
I would imagine so, but I can tell you, you're in the building trades.
Who knows?
If you get a quote for one thing, and all of a sudden delivery trucks or manufacturing plants shut down, prices go up, so.
Prices are good for 30 days or 60 days.
I did bring that up to you, and, you know, they didn't write anything that it was for 30 days.
Nope, there's nothing there.
You won't believe, that's how it works with most things, but it doesn't hurt to reach out to them and then kind of regroup. I really can't tell you if, I know pipe prices are all over the place, so.
All the way.
And that's consistent with everything else. So I guess it's either way, really.
I have a question on the funding sources, what will, what are the funding sources for this?
Well, my funding sources were a little bit differently in September than they are now, I won't, I won't lie about that. I've had some things come up that need prompt attention, so.
So your funding sources, is your, is your enterprise?
It would most likely be from the enterprise.
What about yours? I haven't set up a budget, so if it goes into next year, I'll come back to you and look to encumber those funds, so we can get them through.
So, in, so encumbering of funds needs to be done by December 31st, approved by the selectmen, with a signed contract from the vendor. So, in order to encumber, yours is a little bit different, do you think that you would have the funds next year?
Yeah.
In your fund?
I'm in on the school and church street fund.
Just curious about that.
Is there any drawback to not having it done at this time, with either one of you, without having the chain link fence at this time, so it's not going to interfere with you in any way, if you guys have been going along without it?
Right, I mean, it's really aesthetics.
It's just all aesthetic, so, I mean, so it's not something that's going to hinder you at this point?
Well, why, why, why should we approve it tonight?
Well, this is something we've been working on, to not bring it to you with these voices.
Well, but you're talking about not doing it till the spring.
We're going to see if they can do it, it's going to be, it's hinging on them, so if you guys give us permission to go ahead, call tomorrow and see if they can get it done, if they can't get it done, then we're going to have to put it off. It's dependent on the weather.
Yeah, you're looking for the decision to at least accept their bid.
Right.
And to award it to them, and then find out whether or not they can do it this fall, before winter starts, or.
They're not going to schedule it unless we say, yep, it's happening.
And Bob, we're just bringing to your attention that, you know, Lowe's, the whole world, you know.
Yeah.
Throughout the fall, we can't speak to them, whether those prices change.
You said you're going to have to take it out of the revenue account?
Yep, that's what she's recommending.
I can tell you when I spoke with Laura in the past, that we're completely capable to do that. We're not showing any drop in, you know, collecting revenues at all.
Yeah, we just like to try to stay in that budget, up going into town.
Well, it needs, it needs to be put in a capital reserve, which hasn't been done yet, so, once that's put into a building expense, let's look at the capital reserve and see if we can get it out of that. We've been, we've been talking about that for a little over a year, about where to put those funds, and they're not in there yet, so I think that's something that we should probably look into, coming into March, March vote.
What's the board's wishes? Well, it seems like we should approve it, if it can be done in the fall of the year.
Well, they can't do it this year, we're going to come back to you and let you.
And to find out if there's a fluctuation in price. That's, that's, that's a, you know, a given decision.
Maybe one thing, when COVID calmed down, we can get more folks to, I mean, if it were to fall through someday, you know, I mean, we're not getting a lot back from.
They were all very busy.
Definitely talk to them, find out, get a general consensus of when they can do it, if they have to wait, is there an increase in price?
Want to take a vote on that?
Yeah.
Motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
I move we approve.
I thought you were going to say something, I was waiting. Go ahead. It doesn't matter, I thought you were going to say something else before we voted.
I move we approve the bid as presented tonight for Lowe's, $9,763.41, and the breakdown is $4,277.59 for the fire department, and $5,485.82 for the water department.
I second. More discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, all in favor? Thank you. Water department, arsenic.
So, the last meeting I wasn't available at, the question came up about, I think there were some questions from you about not running Levy Park and the arsenic levels of where it is, and there was a little bit of a miscommunication.
Question was, if we have to do anything down at that well, to fix the arsenic problem before we run, so it doesn't freeze through the water again?
To fix the arsenic?
Yeah, where we're getting the arsenic in there, do we have to do anything to that well, filters or anything?
Not yet, so I think I should first start by explaining the violation, because we received another violation letter, and that was the meaning of you guys bringing it up in public input. So the way arsenic works, specifically for Alton, is that we were on quarterly sampling. So quarter three, we're supposed to take our chemical monitoring at Levy Park. We had the high arsenic level of .019, which just put us over the threshold, so that put us in a violation status. We then took another quarterly sample, and it was my misunderstanding that that was, if that was under the limit, we were going to be out of violation status. Actually, what happens is that you have a running annual average, and most towns, they take arsenic samples throughout the year, not just one quarterly sample. So if they have, you know, four quarters, and they have four different arsenic levels, you're going to take that average, and if you're underneath the limit, you're okay. Being that we only take one, you don't have much of an average, that's, that's what you've After speaking with DES, if we take 12 concurrent samples, now they have to be, they can't be sporadic, I can't take an arsenic test for Levy Park this Monday, and then take it Tuesday this week, and then the following month, you know, the second week, I have to submit sample results, compliance sample test, on the same day every month, to consider that a running annual average. So the reason we're not running Levy Park, there was a misunderstanding with that, was because I have to send out those violation letters again, and it gets people very, very upset, they think they're drinking water with arsenic in it. What we were doing at the department was gathering a good array of samples, so when they looked at the sample results, they had the confidence that they're under the violation. So what we've been doing since the last, I'm just pulling it up on my phone, since the violation, we took another sample, and the results were .0032. The standard going into July next year, when they drop it, is .005. So we're at .0032, then we took another one, we're taking it every Monday, and leaving Levy offline. I submitted another test result today, that will give me four, and that gives me the confidence to then put Levy Park online, into the system, so the water line doesn't freeze, and the customers can have confidence that their results are now declining. So, our next result was .0026, which is another drop, and the result after that was actually So we're significantly dropping. Now, that being said, we could, we could lose water in that well at some point, it's just natural, you know, we're in a drought, it's had a long break, so I would hope that it would, it would do very well. The arsenic could start to come up. We're still pretty close, because they're dropping the standard to .005, but we're still far away. So as far as treatment right now, I don't believe we need it, but it is something that we need to start anticipating, because they are dropping that standard, you know, every three years, I believe, to trace them out. So, but right now, I've got enough evidence that now that the well is running regularly, not just, you know, it's on in April and then back on again in October, it's running after I get these results back from this Monday's test, I usually get them, I get a verbal on Tuesday, I get the actual heart call on Wednesday. If that result is still within the limits we've been seeing through past samples, we'll turn that on to the system, Levy Park will run Monday through Thursday, and we'll switch back to Jones Friday, Saturday, Sunday, just like we did in the past. But I think there was a whole bunch of discrepancies to, we're going to, we're not going to run Levy, it's going to freeze again, it's going to be a nightmare, I was just trying to get enough data collected to give the customers confidence that it was safe.
So that stays at the .3?
Yep.
Do we have to put a filter or anything in that well for next year to have it fly?
The standard is .005. If that changes, if we start to creep up, and if we exceed that limit, say we have a bad sample, say it didn't flush long enough, we have a standard operating procedure for sampling now because of this, that that well runs at least 24 hours before we take a sample. With that, that process, I think we'll be fine. If we do start seeing a jump, and we get back into violation status, I imagine we will. But right now, we haven't even been close to the .005, which is not the standard right now, we're still .0. But they're cutting that in half.
Right.
But I think, I think Levy is doing quite well now, with the, with the procedures that we're, we're doing.
Worst scenario, if you do have to treat it, is that big money?
It would happen, it would happen in years, the station itself right now is not big enough for any type of filtration, yeah, and being that it's not our land and whatnot, there would be a lot that would go into it. Arsenic, depending on what type of arsenic it is, depends on your type, your type of treatment, depends on how much surface area you need to have filtration in there. It's a very small building, we may deal with what we have.
Yeah, yeah.
Now that we have the new VFD in there, that panel takes up a lot more room than the last one, so, and then we've got to transplant it.
That's why I'm asking, if we got a plan on doing it, because if we do, then you're going to.
Right, well, it's a very, it's a very expensive thing to do if you're under the limit, you know what I mean, so if you continue to stay under the limit, no, you don't, but if, you're, you're going to, I mean, we can budget to test non-compliance samples, to do a, you know, a general system evaluation, to see how we're performing. We're on quarterly sampling anyway, but we can, we can do our own testing, I think an arsenic test is $18 to $24, to kind of see what our performance is, it doesn't have to go to the state, but it gives us an idea as to how we're performing in there, and if we need to do something before we're in violation status. If we, if we do that type of sampling, once a month, it's kind of our procedure, we're going to know before our quarterly samples, and we get into violation status, which is a small cost compared to, you know, to do the research than to find out and then have to react. I don't think that's a bad plan. And I can work that into my, my sampling schedule.
Because we don't want to just all of a sudden say, hey, if we need addition, we need another building.
Yeah, and I think that's what's been going on, is, you know, Jones is our strong well, we rely on that one, and Levy's kind of been put on the back burner, but I found that it performs a lot better when it's running, you know, so.
Yeah, like any well?
Yeah, just like any, any, I mean, any type of motors or electrical, you don't want them to sit for a long time.
So, what do you've been, you've been pumping, you've been pumping that well to waste?
Yes.
Okay, so it's.
Just, just to build the confidence, you know, that letter, you know, I do the same thing with my own mail, if I, I only see what I want to see in that letter, and it tends to cause alert for a lot of our customers, and, you know, some people, talking with a lot of customers, they still have the mindset that, well, I get my water off of Levy, and I get my water off of Jones, and that's not how it works. So, to have those, those hard facts, the data that has been submitted to the state, I think if we do get those calls, and we have that, that evidence, they'll feel a lot better that they're, that they're within this certain range when we turn the well back on, and we're, we're in smaller amounts, so.
When do you think that will take place?
Like I said, we get the, we sample every Monday, and I usually get the results around Tuesday, Wednesday morning. When I have that fourth set of results, if it's where we were performing in the past results, we'll turn Levy Park back on, and it'll run Monday to Thursday. Right now, we're only running about three hours a day, so, I mean, we're not, we're not pumping a lot of water right now, we're not making a lot.
A lot of water back in the ground.
Yeah, so, I think our run times might jump up to five hours a day when we run off of Levy, because it only does 300 gallons a minute, but that might go against us as well with Levy, because it's, it's still going to be higher than in the past when we were pumping 16 hours a day. So we may find that we might have to flush the system a little bit more because of stagnant water, but it's one of those.
It's getting better.
Yeah, but it's just like a bruise, it's going to, it's going to get worse before it gets better, we're at three hours right now, 165 pounds of pressure, it's going to find its spot to relieve itself pretty soon, but, yeah, I think, I think the Monday through Thursday schedule and put the heavy load on Jones for the weekends, just because people are home, they're doing more. We might get into some mild temperatures coming up in next week, so Jones can keep up a little bit, not that it's going to have a hard time keeping up. So that's kind of the plan, if there was any confusion as to why Levy wasn't running, I don't want to go through seeing an eight-inch main frozen solid again, so we will have it running by the end of the week.
I was nervous about it, yeah.
Oh, believe me, I was too, that's why I figured we better, we better talk about it and kind of clear the air.
Don't be the council again.
Chairwoman Rubin?
Yeah, if you want to, you can continue running the meeting, it's almost late.
Go ahead, we're happy.
You're welcome, thank you.
How did you, you and Mr. Robbitsworth make out today, good?
No, so there's a, there's a little bit of a problem with the. So there's a, there's a little bit of a problem with the, our fusion machine, the IPS pipe and this IPS pipe. Our fusion machine can do both, but when it was purchased from Lake Region Water, it didn't have the inserts to run the dips pipe. EJ Prescott, when I said, hey, I need pipe, let's go, they delivered dips, but they can't find their inserts for the, for the dips fusion adapters. So we were able to, Highway was able to go up today and saw cut pavement for us, which is perfect. My EJ Prescott rep, because we're in the VAS program, is driving. For some reason, the adapters got delivered from Gardner, Maine to LA Drew up in, in Interrail. So my EJ Prescott rep got confirmation that they were delivered in, at LA Drew, and he's driving up tomorrow and delivering them to me tomorrow morning. So our plan is to get all the pipe up there, and each fuse should take about twenty minutes. Hopefully, we can stay in front of Matty and the excavator, and we'll lay the pipe right at him.
Good. Good luck with that.
Yeah, well, maybe you hit a service or something and slow down, but no, I, you know, those forty-foot section of pipe, so one fuse is eighty feet, so we should be able to stay, especially with the colder temps, that pipe's gonna cool off quick, so we should be able to get it right in the ground.
You all good?
Have a new main by Friday.
Thank you. Very much. Good evening. Comments are, I was late tonight. Move on to item three, twenty twenty-one Church Street, School Street, Road Reconstruction, Discussion and Finalization. Mr. Roberts can join us. And I did have one resident over there come and see me over the weekend with some thoughts, and I think that's why two of the residents are here tonight. But they gave me some thoughts I'd like to bring forward, if Mr. Roberts does his thing.
I'll bring it forward while I cut the one down the road.
So the neighbors on the, depending on which side of the road you're going down, but let's start from Main Street going down School Street towards one forty. The neighbors on the left-hand side, about four of them, if I have them agree, have come together with a thought is, why not move the sidewalk on the other side of the telephone poles? So you don't have to move it to the right-hand side and have the kids cross down there by that curb. The ones that came and talked to me said they're willing, you know, they're not gonna have any problems with it, but they threw that out there for a thought, then you could put the granite curving if you had to, or paved curving up along, too close to the telephone poles to keep cars out of the telephone poles. They were, they were thinking about putting a four-foot sidewalk on that side where it is now, but on the other side of the telephone poles. So you wouldn't have to do a crosswalk down there by, in front of the old bowls garage or in front of the Barney apartment house.
Yeah, taken care of.
So the sidewalk would remain on the same, but that's what they were, they were asking. I told them I would bring it before the board tonight and see what your thoughts were.
Instead of having two crosswalks, you'd still only have one.
You'd have one down at the other end of...
Yeah, like there is now.
Well, no, you'd have one down at the other end of one forty, because don't forget, you get past Church Street, you have that, that chute right there, because you're banking, you'd still have a crosswalk there changing over at that point. But your busiest part of the road would still stay on the same side. That's what got brought before again.
One of the questions I had asked the day of the sidewalk, I had asked both having that on that side. I saw it about it too, same, same issue.
The mayor talked about, well, leave a grass area there. My opinion is with a grass area, I can't see a grass area in between there only because there would never be any grass, because the salt and everything would just keep killing it.
So, so in order to do something like that, granite curving would not be on the sidewalk. Granite curving would be in front of the telephone poles, because that's what guards the telephone poles. You're going back to, there'll be some type of grass strip there, whether it's three or four feet wide, and then a concrete sidewalk that would be embedded. So it wouldn't have granite curving on either side, it would just be a four-foot concrete sidewalk backside. Basically, the whole idea of the sidewalk is to protect the telephone pole. So that's what you would have on, you'd have that there, grass area, and then, I have no problem with it. We have plenty of right-of-way for it, put it on item discussion with you. But that would be, be dealing with the parking area in front of, veterinarian clinic would not be there because of the granite curving. And that, there'd be a couple other issues. I have to look at whether or not, what kind of trees we've got that are, when we get down further. I don't know if we have any big maples or something, and I'm trying to figure what's on that left-hand side to put it behind that. I know that, we haven't talked with Courtney at all, but this would be the perfect opportunity. I know one of the fire hydrants on that side would be moving that fire hydrant into that grass area rather than being behind the sidewalk. Yeah, it's a little bit different, but it's all doable.
Well, it was just brought to you from their concerns, so then, then the kids wouldn't have to cross the street on that slight curve right there.
So when it came down to the curb line, once we get past the telephone poles, when we got backwards, Ken, he stood behind us, so I just mentioned it, that's where the granite curving would come back to the sidewalk. So again, in that area, it wouldn't be affected much more than six or eight inches as we discussed. Prior to that, it'd be quite a bit.
Let me ask this question, if we kept the sidewalk on that side, all the abandoned area would lose some of their parking on the street parking. Why not make the right-hand side then, move that over a little bit for some off-street parking right there up to the funeral pole? Because when there's a funeral there, when it's a large one, or a wake, we know that that area can get a little congested, so even if we, I know the cost is a little more, but if, what if we made that road just a little bit wider to make some off-street parking?
What'd make it wider, you have to go at least eight feet, if not ten. So you're adding ten feet to that road, which is twenty feet wide, so it's thirty feet wide in that beginning.
It's just a big section, it's just at the front.
Well, for the short section right there, Mill Pine comes out, it's on the corner. The only thing we have to figure out would be the drainage system, that'd be up to the engineer, that goes across to the bank. That would be the only, I question mark, all your drainage is on that side, but the next drainage down, I think, is right in front of the, right in front of the, the entrance to mortuary. Here on, the next one's in the lawn down below that. But up to that point, I, I don't have any problems with that either.
The other thought I had is, I talked to you about it that day, the telephone pole that's down by where the cars parked diagonally on the right-hand side, asked you about that to see if that could be moved back so we could push that parking in a little bit, because when you come around that corner, the way the town put out the little island there, it's a little narrower right there, especially if someone does a pollinol. So we could, thoughts were if we can move that in the way I talked to you about, but we didn't know because of the telephone pole, because the guide wire that supports it would probably end up having to go on private property.
Yeah, according to this, we are, with the sidewalk behind the parking, we're actually pushing the limits as far as sitting on town property. So when they built that, they built the sidewalk right to the town line. In order to go back any further, it'd be a question mark. Now, for the intersection itself to change, there's no doubt in that that we want to change that intersection. The little island in between it, it's gone, you know, we're gonna pull that out, you know, that's, it's just a pain in maintenance, pain in the neck. And that corner could be rounded further, which would make it easier for the buses to come around. And the same thing in the other direction, it'd be a fairly wide intersection, because it doesn't quite line up directly across the street to Pine Street. The same thing the other way, it doesn't line up with the rest of School Street. So that'd be something for the engineer to figure out how, at the end of that parking area from the school, that we address that corner to widen it out in that one area and get it on better alignment with the rest of the road. At least now you're gonna put sidewalks down below that to Route one forty, so...
That was my only concern, right across where the school bus is, that slight curve there. The cars are all parked there, it seems like they creep up just a little bit.
Yeah.
So even if we could move further down with the parking, get a little more straight in, or more of a, a longer angle going in, so they get them more off the road and so they're just right on where a white line would, per se. That was one of my only concerns, and then at the end of School Street at one forty, is making that a straight turn-in instead of a rounded turn-in. And I think you can discuss that anyways.
Right, the other thing is because we're draining, changing the drainage system, I mean, that can be addressed because, not just the right side of the road, but the school side of the road, that's a big dip when they pull into the, the turnabout area. The only reason that went out as far as it did, because they brought that sidewalk out to that edge, is that that can be shaped down a little bit as well. I think that'd be up to the engineer, how he wants to do a realignment back to school in that corner and still keep drainage. You know, again, we're talking about brand-new drainage, that's a plus item. So basically, before I talk to, I'm actually gonna talk to an individual who drew the plans, about setting up an RFP for this, and I'll have to sit with Courtney and I will have to sit with him to figure out the water line side of it and what we're gonna do. So this concept is what we're kind of finalizing now, so you want to keep the sidewalk on the same side. Granite curving will be in front of the telephone poles, not behind them. And then the granite sidewalk will be, you know, same thing we were doing, four feet wide, orange-ish thick, good sub-basin everything, we got grass that comes up on both sides of it. Keep it on that side, and then the grass strip will actually fade out after the last telephone pole just before the school. And it will come back, the granite curving will come back up the sidewalk, which will still stay four feet up to the school entrance. All the drainage system on this roadway is actually on the opposite side of the roadway, so we're getting it right-hand side driving down from Main Street. We'll keep that drainage all down that whole right-hand side, seems to work now. I'm pretty sure it will continue to work. They'll have to engineer it that way to keep that drainage on that side. If for some reason they think they cannot, then they'll just put a cross culvert going across in another catch basin. So we'll deal with the intersection at School Street itself, Pine Street, Church Street, School Street, that whole intersection, and try to get him to do a realignment for that. Again, you're gonna get a rough draft before this is finalized. The only thing we're here to do is say, yeah, we're gonna go out to engineering for this, and these are the ideas. So, just to discuss the drainage, so these are basic standard pipes all the way down through the drainage system until it gets beyond, and this is only my opinion, and we'll ask, we'll ask him about it, until it gets beyond the Church Street going towards Mill Pond. They actually make a six-foot diameter of some, and because it's such good digging in that area, only to protect Mill Pond as much as possible, because we still use six thousand yards of sand a year on an average, and we sand these pretty hard. That will protect the last few catch basins of the mains, because on that lower side is actually catch basin on both sides of them. So the right-hand side will be the mains, so they will be six feet in diameter, which traps everything that we can possibly trap that will go into the catch basin.
We're gonna have some type of swell at the end of that before it gets Mill Pond, or a sediment pond?
There is an open swell across the street that actually belongs to state. Once it goes under the road, that right-hand side is the question mark. I'm not even sure which town property is there. We've never maintained it, as far as I know, that it's a state culvert that goes across. We just tie into that. So, and then when we get back into Church Street, now Church Street, what they originally did to Church Street, and I kind of mentioned it there, after we drew this little intersection, is that the catch basin that's in front of the old video that's right there at the intersection will probably be remodeled a little bit. What goes across the road right there is a six-inch clay. You actually look in it, kind of winds, and it actually comes across the street there. But the very next one back is a catch basin, and we're gonna ask him to design this so that catch basin is collective going towards Mill Pond and not back towards Main Street, because what they have to do is they put the pipe directly on top, right underneath the cover, so it's not down on it, so it, it actually froze on us a couple of times. So I'm gonna mention that to him as well. Now, this also gets granite curving, the sidewalk all the way down through, from the video all the way down through, and it gets parking, just beyond the video, all the way down through, the whole right-hand side is parking, so it gets the calvis residence. What we've never done is put parking on the opposite side of the road. It was requested once before by the church. So that would be a question to the board of selectmen, do we want him to attempt to design someplace in front of the church? What they were supposed to be was handicap parking in front of the church.
I guess my question would be to you, certain Sundays, certain holidays, that road is just barely passable by one car.
Yes.
So I think either there should be parking on all the one side, like myself, looking at it. Because if he had to go down on Christmas Eve evening, they're having a trip, so he has to go down the plow. Even with an eight-foot plow going down there through a ditch truck, it's still gonna, can be kind of tight because of the way the sidewalk is, and the sidewalk can be actually reformed to four foot, correct?
Yes, right now it's petunias curving on both sides. And now it's gonna be granite curving with, and the road has to be adjusted quite a bit too, in that area.
It'll be four foot wide on one side, which is, it's only running about two and a half to three feet, correct?
Uh, in most cases, three feet, thirty-six inch side.
I mean, one other foot wide, I'd see they're going back into the lawns there, which I don't know where our right-of-way was there, because I can't remember.
Right, it's, we, we have, on that side of the road, we're like sitting right on top of it.
As it is, the parking that sits there now puts right in the road, really. So, I mean, the churches, I mean, they try to keep the area plowed every one time so they can park out in the field. But I, I believe Ken's right, the parking, the sidewalk should be all to one side. So sidewalk coming up from School Street up on Church Street, that little bit of sidewalk there, is that pound land where that sidewalk is now?
Yes, the petunias curving, we were requested many years ago by the church because kids were going to the church there to build that sidewalk up further on that right-hand side, and that's what we did. So it dropped off at the church. That's probably the only cross drainage that would be in that road. These roads are right there at the corner of that parking lot, too.
Is that on the edge of the right-of-way too?
No.
What right-of-way do we have there, or are we...
Uh, looking at it, I want to say eight feet.
Another eight feet to go, or?
Yeah, we have, we're actually on the line in most cases with the parking and sidewalks. On, coming from Main Street would be the right-hand side. We're sitting right on top of the line, but on the left-hand side, we're at least eight feet away.
All the way down?
Pretty much, yes. So it's all the way to the intersection.
What if we switch the sidewalk to the other side? Or we kept the sidewalk on the same side, it would all stay same side all the way down, and then we widen the roadway a little bit to the right, so you have better off-street parking?
Switch the parking from right-hand side, from right-hand side to left-hand side completely?
Going down, yeah.
That's a possibility. People are gonna lose a few things up front, but yeah, because you want to have that parking on the side, you may not have to switch a lot of the lines. You're only talking about two or three feet, maybe.
Either that or you just put the sidewalk all on that side and put, move the road into where the sidewalk was, but the only problem is...
Yeah, that's a good, a great possibility.
Either way, one way or the other, just so you widen that road just a little bit.
Widen out, right.
This is the option, pardon.
Right, yep. Yeah, you could actually do that almost, almost from the intersection of Main Street all the way down through there. With the exception of the new telephone poles, you might have to get around.
The only place you really got some open drainage is right there in front of Calvis's stone wall, correct?
Uh, that's where it goes open drainage, but it will all be closed drainage system. There'll be no open drainage system.
Sidewalk could continue right straight down and cut across where the intersection is.
Yeah, I'd have to look and see.
Crosswalk there anyways coming across, so the kids are gonna walk down the rest of School Street. Up Calvis's, wouldn't you, because of that little hill, never get icy? Well, either hill gets icy, they both, the sidewalk now that we have comes up the hill. Yeah, but I'm just saying with the cars, you're saying cross it right there? Nope, not cross it there, cross it down at the intersection, because you're already gonna have a crosswalk coming across in the intersection. You go down...
We have that side, and we just have to do something with the fire hydrant that's right there.
That's right. Then you got the rocks that are in the town right-of-way right there.
Yeah, they're not slant loads.
I mean, I'm, I'm just saying one or the other, keep the sidewalk on one side, so we widen that roadway a little bit, or vice versa, it doesn't really matter much to me, but... I think you're correct, though, that road's gotta be a little wider, because it gets packed.
Actually, it's quite wide, it, it actually is quite wide when it's turned around the church. It only narrows up when it gets closer to the intersection of School Street is where it really starts to narrow up, only because it's never been cut back. And according to this, we could do a pretty good cutback.
The only place that it is a narrow is right in front of the church, because normally nobody parks in front of the church, right in front of the church. They either park all on the right, and then right after the church, they go both sides, and then all the way up through. So I'm, I'm just thinking more safety-wise, that's all. While we're doing it, why not make that little extra wider? Because it'd be a lot less expensive now, they say, all right, we should have done this, and we do it.
Yeah, they might use, they might miss a little bit of islands by the church, but other than that, that's about it. I don't see anything that's really constraining the widening to that, that side of the roadway.
The only thing you'd have, you'd have a couple, when they were on the corner down here, they got a few trees, maple trees right in the line, that must be right within that eight feet close to it.
Right, we own quite a bit as we get down to that, and then...
We own that tip, don't we, down in that corner?
We own the corner.
Yeah.
I mean, it's quite a different.
That's where the one, uh, single room schoolhouse was, right on that corner.
Yeah, we, uh, it actually shoots back from the roadway, I had to guess right here, it probably jumps back thirty-five, forty feet in that corner. That whole corner on the right hand side coming down and turning on the Church Street, we own at least forty feet of that.
Yeah.
Basically, if we were down there, you saw the two cross walk, two walkways that were there.
Yes.
And we were going to eliminate one, but that's all on town property too, that whole...
That's right, I was hoping maybe we could shift some of that diagonal parking down there in that corner.
Right, yeah, once we get to that sort, absolutely right, just beyond the telephone poles is when the shift would begin, and it's all town property, we can realign that.
Gentlemen, just, I'm not speaking out of turn, just so I can confirm what I said to you about the sidewalk, if you mind, do you mind if I ask the folks?
Like to hear.
Just so I, I had Mr. Hayes' conversation with you, right, I wanted to make sure, I just wanted to double check with you folks.
Yeah.
Was my understanding that you wanted to keep the sidewalk on the same side?
It was a priority to keep it very dangerous, it's a problem that, um...
I just wanted to make sure I had the conversation. Thank you.
Makes sense.
Yeah, I thought that.
I remember saying it that day.
Yeah.
Would have been in favor to keep it all on that side.
I mean, just a quick look at the whole thing, the only thing I see in here is one large maple tree. It would be on Mr. Hayes' property, according to this. That's the only question mark that's there. We just have to look at that. It's going to be the only question mark. Yep.
See if we can get a hold of Mr. Hayes and just let him know that it's a possibility.
Yeah, it may not have to come out, I'd have to look at the telephone poles, it's right there, and I think that's right on his property, that's behind the sidewalk, and not actually in front of the sidewalk or in the sidewalk. I'm pretty sure that one is the one that sets back, but I'd have to look at it, that's what creates a straight line. But setting the rest of it in the back, I don't think there's a problem through, as far as tree lines, all the way down through there. So that's what I'm going to try to write into an RFP when talking to, I'm actually going to talk with Mark Sarge to conclude plans, and see if we can formulate a good idea of what the feelings are of the board, the residents, put it together, he puts a preliminary together, it comes back to you as the board to take a look at it and see if we're all on the same page. And then he'll go to try to finalize it and come up with a, an estimated cost, so he'll know where you're standing before it goes to bid.
That would include the water line and everything?
Yeah, I'll have to get with Courtney, we'll have to, we'll have to go over with, hopefully I can meet with Mark Sarge, he'll, it'd be nice enough to come out and talk with us, make sure we're on the same page to put it out to bid. I don't think there's anything else, and we'll do all the parking on the left hand side of Church Street coming in from Main Street. We'll try to continue it down as far as possible, so we may end up adding parking beyond the band now. And I think the church would enjoy seeing handicap spots near the church, it'll be on the same side of the road. So basically, there is no sidewalk on that side of the road.
Right. We just have to maybe adjust for a crosswalk at the church on that one side.
Right.
If you have kids coming up throughout the school programs, that would be, yeah.
Yeah.
For your ADA compliance.
Yeah, the only thing we may be looking at is just to offset the cost, because the drainage system is on, on the opposite side of the roadways here, is running rather than granite curving, petunis curving, kind of the same thing we're doing trash side, the same thing we just did up at Roberts Cove, just to control the water, then there's no ditch lines, there's no dumping out on the lawns, most of the...
And then see if you work through.
So far, doing really, really well with it, so we're hanging on to it pretty good. And we're still in consensus, once we get to Church Street, head of the 140, the sidewalk will start on the right hand side till it gets approximately, almost to the driveway or the parking area that you're utilizing for the old residents on the right, and we're going to cross it right there, across the street, and then all the way down to Route 140 on that side of the street.
That'd be a great curving line in, coming off the roadway there.
So that's what I'm going to have him draw for you, and, and come up with some, you know, preliminaries before it comes back to you, and your thought or any changes in between now and then while we're talking to him, please feel free to call. And if any of the residents are listening to the conversation tonight, same thing, please feel free to call, we'll try to incorporate them, or at least get it back to the board so we can make a decision before this is completely finalized. But hopefully this, holidays are coming up, they move very quickly, and hopefully get it out sometime in January, but we know the school closing is sometime in June, so they'll have a five month window, hopefully get it out for thirty days and have it brought back. It's actually a pretty simple project because of what the sub base is today, and the water line should be fairly simple too, other than Courtney's going to be doing overtime connections, because once it's built, you can't dig up my road. It's mine to labor. Anything else, sir?
Sir.
Do I have a chance to ask the board to put this together with someone to?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much. Look forward to the engineering.
If I may, make one more comment?
Yes, sir.
We do have, I guess Josh is going to be working overtime on this one, we do have a couple of public hearings that may be coming up.
Roadways acceptance?
Okay. Well, that's, where it is, they're coming, as well as a couple of other things to do with public hearing, whether we do it all by this right here and try to explain to people about it. There's not a lot to explain, especially with road adoption, but I know there's a couple of the question marks that may come up with this public hearing.
We'll have to, we only allow fifteen in here, we'd have to open up the museum, possible, correct?
Yes.
And we'll only be allowed so many in there, so we'll have to, once that comes about, I'm sure the Town Administrator, Emergency Management Team and Josh can work that out.
Yeah.
But we've been waiting, we've been hearing, they've been coming and coming and coming with the happen, so I'm sure when it's past approaching, they want to get a bid fast.
Officially, I'm back on Wednesday, I think, just cut the vacation short by there, see if I get to start, so hopefully you get your deer in between.
Alright, good for you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thanks very much. Thanks for coming in on your vacation. Gentlemen, moving on to number four then, 2019 auction revenues. We're in the packet from Liz, she had sent it up to the town attorney, waiting for a certain hearing to be over, to see if they could take, she hit us to take the money out of escrow and put it into these fund balance. Yep, according to what the town attorney says, yes we can. And the only question to the Town Administrator is, that $220,000 that you want us to transfer in the night, vote on, does that include just what was owed on taxes, or what was brought in in total?
That's what was brought in in total from the sale of the properties that are now back on the tax rolls.
And according to the town attorney, everything that's denied by the plaintiff?
Yes.
Court case over in Cheshire County, I think it was Cheshire County?
It was Polanski versus Town of Bedford.
And the judge ruled in the town's favor? Just hard for me to believe that a judge would let the bulk of the money, someone's property, go to the town, not just only the taxes that were owed. That's where I just find that, or go to the bank to held a mortgage on it, so. So gentlemen, Town Administrator is requesting a vote tonight, and so politely she wrote us the motion. So one of you gentlemen, if you don't have any questions to the Town Administrator, you'd like to read that motion, give a second, we can move forward with this process.
I'll do it.
This way, I don't have to say it first.
And that's just second it.
Okay, the motion is, I move to release the auction revenue funds and all accrued interest from the 2019 auction escrow account held by the town treasurer, and place all of these funds and interest in the general fund. As of September 30th, 2020, said funds totaled of $220,570.03. Once the transfer has been made, the 2019 auction escrow fund is to be closed.
Second. Motion is made by Mr. Whitman, second by Ms. McDonald, open the floor. So is anything, Town Administrator's, Liz, anybody can sue for anything. This does not stop anybody from suing the town of Alton, requesting that said funds, after tax, all taxes and penalties were paid for, that they could request to have that done. Was this Superior Court over there, or was this?
This was Superior Court, and I think that is Hillsborough County.
Hillsborough County, okay. So it is, it is case law now, which is good. I just want to make sure this, I just, I just don't feel it's right, I feel it's right that you get, the town gets the taxes that were owed, and the interest and the penalties. I don't believe the town should have the right to take extra money that was above and beyond that.
Interesting.
Well, no. Say if the only taxes were owed on this one particular property, say $50,000, but the town took $100,000 then on the whole. I feel the town is entitled to their $50,000 penalties and interest lawyer fees, recording fees, but if $25,000 was over, it should go back to the, the property owner, or to the bank that had the foreclose on it, but normally if a bank forecloses, we wouldn't have gotten it anyways, they would have paid the bucks to them to date. That's just my feeling, I don't feel the town should be making a profit off the auction above and beyond the taxes, the interest, the penalties, and the lawyer fees. But the town attorney has ruled that this money is rightfully the town's now, I'm just saying down the road, we could see a lawsuit come up with it, and then we go through, not to carry court, but it's already a case ruling out of Hillsborough.
And if, may I speak?
Yes, ma'am.
So if you remember, the 2019 auction was an absolute auction, so they were put up for sale, highest bidder wins, that's what these funds are, but we couldn't put them into the general fund right away because of this legal case down in Hillsborough County. And so that's been determined, that the law stays that it is, and everything that we have done with our auctions and other towns and cities have done with their auctions remains the same.
All the questions? So even though I feel that it's not right, we should not be sitting in an escrow account leaving money in, now that the town attorney said it's fine. So I'll call for the vote, as no further discussion, I'll pull the board, Mr. McDonald.
Yes.
Mr. Whitman?
Yes.
Mr. Rochelle?
Yes.
Not worth yet, votes in the affirmative.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, gentlemen, moving on to Selectmen's report, so I'll call Mr. Holt. I just have one little mill foil committee, Dash Work Company that has been doing it for us, is no longer going to be doing it next year. So I got a email from Dave Gould, the chairman, he, working with Kelly, they're going to be drawing up some bids, going, going out to bid, they have three contractors now they're looking at. Other than that? Yep. Mr. Rochelle?
Um, just a brief, the ZAC committee is now completed and ended their reviews over the six, six different amendments that were gone over, that's now gone over to the planning department for approval, or to look at, it went well, everything seemed to move along pretty well, so just wanted to mention it was now, next step is going to plan.
Whitman?
I have nothing.
We, that's on the agenda for tomorrow night, we, no, I don't have a meeting till tomorrow night, conservation was canceled, so.
Alright, moving on to mine, the Budget Committee, we did meet last week, kind of stayed in my ground a little bit at the last Budget Committee meeting, Liz was there, the last two times actually, I kind of stayed in my position as a Selectman, in that I represent the Board of Selectmen as a Selectmen's liaison to the Budget Committee. I am not the Budget Committee's liaison to the Board of Selectmen, to make that assurance last week, so in case that question arises, because I feel that at times, as certain members of the Budget Committee are trying to set policy versus recommend and not to recommend, that's my understanding of the Budget Committee, is when the budget is presented to them by department heads or the Board of Selectmen, it is their duty to recommend or not to recommend our budget, or not to institute for next year what we should be setting the policy. So I did say if they wanted something brought back before the board, they needed to make a motion, majority needed to approve it, and I would bring it back. Otherwise, I would not bring nothing to the board. I hope you gentlemen are in agreement with that.
I agree with that, absolutely.
Motion that was made last week did fail, just to let you know, so I'm not bringing anything to you. Other than that, the budget for the Budget Committee is moving right along. The department heads have done, have done a great job presenting their budgets to them, answering their questions, Town Administrator, same thing, Laura was there last week, along with Liz and the other department heads, I want to thank them for their support and their, for being there in person, it makes things a little bit easier.
Thank you.
And that is all I have for tonight. So I'll move on to the Town Administrator's report.
Okay. Uh, the first item I have is a document which you have from the town clerk, tax collector, actually with her tax collector hat on. Currently, by law, she's allowed to waive any interest that is up to $5, and over $5 has to come before the board. Her memo to you is requesting that you increase that cap from $5 to $10.
Gentlemen, what the Town Administrator's Board has asked you for a motion to approve a request of a tax collector to waive the interest in the amount of $5 to $10.
It's time, it's been a long, it's been a while.
No, it makes sense.
Are you thinking about lowering the interest rates on past due taxes from 16% down to maybe a little more reasonable, 8%? Just in time, interest rates out there at 2.75.
Yeah.
That is set by law, so I have no control over that.
What's your pleasure, gentlemen?
Oh, is that much to? No. No. No.
So if you're in agreement, just a simple motion would suffice?
Make a motion to allow the tax collector to waive the property tax interest from $5 to $10.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Rochelle to approve the tax collector's request to waive the interest from $5 to $10, second by Mr. Whitman, any further discussion? Game on, I'll pull the board, Mr. Holt?
Yes.
Mr. Rochelle?
Yes.
Mr. Whitman?
Yes.
Mr. Whitman, yes, votes in the affirmative.
The next item has to do with the solar array RFP that you received previously. This was reviewed by Attorney Sessler, he is fine with it, but he wanted to be assured, which I assured him, that if you do approve this and things start moving forward step by step, all future documents with this company would have to come before, before the board, such as the lease contract, the pilot contract, and the rebate agreement, those are the three forms of revenue on this. And so, and normally that's done, so, and they're not done all at once, one is brought, you review it, I take it to the attorney, he reviews it, and, and then I bring it back to you. So that, that was just, you, you had asked that this go to the attorney, and this is...
So my second question, did he send you back the written confirmation of that?
No.
Or was it verbal?
It's verbal.
Okay, the only reason I would request written confirmation of that, so it can be kept along with the files, so ten years down the road, when any of us might not be here, they say, well, the town attorney looked at it, and they go back, says, oh no, they only verbally recommended it. I'd just like to have a paper trail with his email on it, from him stating that he approves this, and that the Selectmen will follow the steps for each step of this contract that he will review it.
Yeah, I'll, I'll definitely get that.
Alright, so gentlemen, I would need a motion to approve the RFP for the, for the pilot, for the solar array. So moving... So move, gentlemen. We're just.
I'll second that, the discussion.
Motion made by Paul Rochelle to approve the RFP of the pilot solar array.
Pilot part we're doing or we're doing the whole contract?
We're saying right now, we're agreeing with, if I'm not mistaken, we're agreeing to what they have come back to us with, the town council looked at it, he's approved it. Now this gives them permission to file DES, for DES permits to move forward. It does not give approval for them to stop building tomorrow.
You're agreeing to do business with this particular member who answered the?
Underneath that contract.
Yeah.
Any more questions? I'll pull the board then. Mr. Whitman.
Yes.
Mr. McDonald.
Yes.
Mr. Rochelle.
Yes.
Mr. Holt.
Reluctantly, yes.
Mr. Whitworth, yes. Vote is in the affirmative.
Thank you. Um, the next item I have has to do with the draft, two-page press release. If you recall at the last meeting, I was asked to, very end of the meeting, I believe it was, to just come up with some sort of a press release explaining to the residents about the recent tax rate setting. This is just a rough draft. Um, and if you want anything changed, added, removed.
The, um, Liz, one other thing. Can I see your copy?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah.
An apple?
No.
Yes, it's all the way in the back of the folder.
Way back.
TA.
Okay, good. So the only thing I would like to have put in there, let the folks also know in that year, there was no road reconstruction, so nine hundred fifty thousand dollars was not voted upon. Was not voted upon, so that also cut that budget by a million dollars.
Yeah, that's right.
I can add that in.
If we could add that in.
Yeah.
So when they start looking at it, it wasn't just off two million, it was almost three and a half million dollars now. Then everything as stated in this, everything was going within this year, so you had the nine hundred fifty thousand, plus you had the two million dollar increase. That was really a three million dollar increase. I don't know about the rest of you, but I stand on Main Street pretty good. People know right where to find it. I've gotten beaten up pretty bad in the last four days, but after I sit there and explain to them why this has gone up, because most of them don't ask why it's gone up. They just see it gone up and are backed up over fifteen dollars and they say, we're right back where we were two years ago, about ten cents, uh, twenty cents more. But I explained to them what happened that year. We went through a default budget. Um, we did not have the road reconstruction, the money was not approved even after by petition. So basically you're looking at a three million dollar difference there, plus the five hundred thousand. So that's why it lowered so much. And this year, everything got approved just about, plus special warrant articles, almost everything except for, I think it was two. That's what raised it right back up. So mostly generally, after talking to them about this, and I, you know, I had asked, talked to Liz about doing this, is just so it can more simply maybe explain the reason why. Because even though we had nothing to do with lowering the tax rate except for that five hundred thousand dollars, the default budget was what really lowered it. Okay, we didn't. We tried, we had a regular budget that we were trying to get past.
He dropped it all these cents.
Okay. So when some folks said, well, why can't you go through the budget now and lower it? And I says, well, it's when you're talking to ten million dollar budget, which your three biggest departments, so your highway, your police and your fire, is your, and the benefit. But even if you cut a hundred thousand dollars out of the ten million dollar budget, it's like a drop out of a stick. You won't see anything until what has happened before. And we tell them, the department heads do best to come in and request what they want. It's mostly the increase in budgets of from our pay increase, pay increases, insurances, whether it's benefits, whether it's liability insurance or work that's comped. And everything goes up. Most of the times we usually see a liability insurance five percent increases. Um, but there also everyone is entitled to fair pay and fair wages. So I did try to sit and talk with most of them. I think one out of the ten I had the discussion with did not agree with me. And I don't think he'd agree with me anyways, just to be hard time. So I just want to let you know, I, I think this is good. This is the first time really Alton has sat down and explained exactly.
I think it's very good to do this.
I would just like to see the road reconstruction aspect.
Yeah, because that contributed to it.
And that was roughly nine hundred?
Nine hundred fifty thousand dollars.
Let me.
That's a good way to explain it.
Yeah. It helps. Yeah.
I, I don't need a motion, it's just the general consensus, you're, if you're okay.
Mr. McDonald. Yes. Mr. Whitman.
Yes.
Mr. Rochelle.
Yes.
Mr. Whitworth, yes, you get the consensus, ma'am. Sorry to take up more of that time, but I just wanted to explain a little bit more. I got one at the store.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Um, and then the last item I have, um, just to bring you up to date on the, um, shibboleths lease dock project that's going on. Uh, G C Engineering is going to be out on the site this week, um, if they haven't already been, um, measuring and, and everything, and he's going to create the plot plan, which is the professional sketch with the dimensions and everything with the ten-foot curtilage that will go around the entire structure. Uh, as you know, based on the property card, the curtilage line cut through a portion of the dock and it cut through part of the little storage area out there.
Yes.
So it's now going to go around it fully. The reason I'm bringing this to your attention is that other little foot wooden dock that's down by the public boat launch, that is, it's my understanding, it's used primarily for people who are loading their boats or bringing them in, if somebody can stand there with a rope or whatever. That is, or is currently within the curtilage, um, area and?
But not all of it.
Right. Right. Twenty-seven, twenty-seven square feet, nine feet by three feet is within the curtilage area. So I just wanted to kind of refresh my memory and confirm with you, that particular little dock, did you want that to be maintained by shibboleths or is that something that really the town should maintain because it's more for the boat launch?
I think it's something, myself personally, I think it's something the town should maintain for the boat launch, because if not, someone's going to get in their boat, unload, they're going to go right over the public dock and sit there for an hour, hour and a half.
Yes.
This way here, they'll launch the boat, they tie it up for a minute, they get all the stuff out of the truck, they pull up an hour away, they're gone. And for safety issues, I think that would be, it's a good idea.
Up to the ten-foot curtilage.
Yeah.
Yes. So currently, just so that you're aware, I checked with the assessor last Friday, currently that little wooden foot bridge dock thing, um, is within the curtilage, the bulk of it, but they were not taxed for it. So that tells me that, that mu, it must have been the same sort of thought process back years ago, that because it's primarily for the boat launch, why should he be taxed on it if it's really for the boat launch and then the town would maintain it and everything? So that's, I just wanted to confirm.
Do you gentlemen agree with that?
Yes.
Oh, I agree with it.
No, I, I think the whole thing should be left for loading of it. And I think when we relike, rewrite the lease, that we talk to Mr. Shibley and that would be part of the one thing we pull out of that ten-foot curtilage. I think.
It's smart though.
No, I think, I, I agree. I mean?
Oh, I, I'm just confused. What are you taking out of the curtilage or?
The little catwalk.
Right at the bottom of the boat launch on the right.
Yeah, yeah.
You know what we're talking about.
Yeah.
There, we want to take out, to leave it for the people to use for the boat launch.
Right now, nine foot, nine foot by three foot kind of belonged to the lease, but they were never taxed on it, from my understanding.
Right, that's right. They were, they were not.
They were not taxed on it.
They were not taxed on it, but yet it was part of the ten-foot curtilage. So I'm requesting that we keep that whole catwalk dock, even if it goes within that ten-foot curtilage. If it goes even within the curtilage a little bit, we keep that for the town, we put that as part of the lease from Mr. Shibley.
That, that he would be excluded from taxation on that particular?
From taxation from it and the town would maintain it.
Yeah, yeah.
And it would be open to public use.
Even though the curtilage line would show, you know, because you want to have a nice neat, you know?
Right, but the curtilage lines, curtilage line would have to be adjusted.
Oh, okay. All right.
Yeah.
That's why I said up to the curtilage.
Because future down the road.
It would have to be like a little zigzag.
Right, because future down the road, we don't want to run into the same problem.
Right.
The fox, we don't have.
The catwalk should be total boat launch.
Catwalk, that's a good one.
Yeah. That's all it really is.
Yeah. So I just wanted to bring this up for a brief discussion, make sure everybody's on the same page.
On the same page.
That'd be in his lease.
Huh?
That's going to be in the new lease.
That, that would be in the lease as described, but that is town's catwalk for launching and loading boats. That would not be Mr. Shibley's by the pier, that would be the town of Alton's. But be defined in the lease.
Is Mr. Shibley aware of that? He understands that?
I have not spoken to him, but I think he would be okay with it. I remember, I remember last fall in talking with him about this, he really didn't know who owned it, it had been there forever and he really could not tell if somebody was using it to park their boat there to go into the restaurant, because his, the kitchen's on the other side and, and I, I really think he wouldn't care one way or the other quite frankly.
I just think it should be part of the lease, we redo it.
Yeah.
And then it's, it's, uh, it's important to have that there for the residents to use or for, uh, open to the public to be able to do their boat launch, be able to tie off right there temporarily, it's not for date docking, it's not for anything, it's just per, uh, temporary, it's load and unload.
Yeah, yep. Good.
Everybody agree with Alton?
Oh, yeah, it's, it's, that is town owned, uh, that is owned by shibboleths.
No, but it has never been taxed on.
I know it has, yep.
The town's maintained it over the years.
It is, yep.
But right now, when we redo, this is the time to finalize the new lease, we're working on a new lease. This would exclude that from that lease and also exclude Mr. Shibley from ever paying taxes on it or rent.
It would make it clear.
Yeah.
No questions. No questions at this point.
But it's not saying we, we're taking ownership of it.
We would be taking ownership of it, yes. You see, does not, does not show ownership now, that one little catwalk, only except for twenty-seven square feet, nine feet by three feet.
Just because of the curtilage line, that was the only?
Because of the curtilage line, because they made them straight lines.
He don't really use that dock anyways.
He never has really.
No, oh, no, no.
Never has.
That's not, that's not the issue.
Well, what's the issue?
Well, no. I'm, I'm not prepared to vote in that time, but that's all right.
Well, I'm just asking for a consensus, we're not asking for a vote. I'm asking for a consensus just because what they're doing is drawing up the curtilage line now. There's an engineering firm going down and taking all the measurements, getting it drafted onto a plot plan and then be brought back before the board when the shibboleths and the board of selectmen negotiate the new lease and agree to the new lease.
But we don't go through what we went through before with not knowing where the court is.
Exactly.
And who owned that other dock.
We've already.
Rights, this way it's all going to be defined and?
We've gone through this all last year.
Couple of times now.
Gone through it with, with all of the attorney, with the, uh, the assessing department. It was measured, calculated, written, everything's put down, so, and, and this needs to be.
And I'm just asking, right now, I'm just asking for a consensus to allow the town administrator with engineering to outline that area that that would be kept as town board.
By consensus, I agree with that, yes.
So we can see it.
Well, we'll see it, yes.
Okay.
Mr. Holt.
Yes.
Mr. Rochelle.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Whitworth, yes, you got the consensus from the board.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Oh, I have consensus.
That's it? Okay, John, moving on to approval of minutes, November second, twenty twenty regular session.
Make a motion. November second, twenty twenty.
Yeah, that was a good one.
I second, motion made by Mr. McDonald to approve November second, twenty twenty regular minutes, second by Mr. Rochelle. Any discussion? Being none, I'll pull the board. Mr. Holt.
Yes.
Mr. Rochelle.
Yes.
Mr. Whitman.
Yes.
Mr. McDonald.
Yes.
Mr. Whitworth, yes. Moving on to November second, twenty twenty, non-public.
You speak.
Yes, ma'am.
I recommend that you release number one and keep number two sealed.
Not to divulge.
Right. Not, not.
Make a motion that we approve November second, twenty twenty, non-public session and release one and keep two sealed.
Not to divulge.
Not to divulge.
Motion made by Mr. McDonald to approve November twenty, November second, twenty twenty, non-public session by releasing item one and keeping two not to divulge.
Second.
Second by Mr. Whitman. Any other discussion? I'll pull the board. Mr. Holt.
Yes.
Mr. Rochelle.
Yes.
Mr. Whitman.
Yes.
Mr. McDonald.
Yes.
Mr. Whitworth, yes, vote is in the affirmative. Moving on to November ninth, budget meeting.
I move, we approve the minutes for November ninth, budget meeting.
A second.
Motion made by Mr. Holt to approve November ninth, budget meeting minutes, second by Mr. Rochelle. Any discussion? Being none, Mr. Whitman.
Yes.
Mr. McDonald.
Yes.
Mr. Holt.
Yes.
Mr. Rochelle.
Yes.
Mr. Whitworth, yes, vote is in the affirmative. Gentlemen, moving on to the consent agenda, I would request a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted for November sixteenth, twenty twenty.
Second, gentlemen.
Motion made by Mr. Whitworth to approve the consent agenda as submitted to board of selectmen, November sixteenth, twenty twenty, second by Paul Rochelle. Any further discussion? Being none, I'll pull the board. Mr. McDonald.
Yes.
Mr. Holt.
Yes.
Mr. Whitman.
Yes.
Mr. Rochelle.
Yes.
Mr. Whitworth, yes, vote's in affirmative. Discretionary action on request appointment, don't discuss majority vote, request allow or not to allow appointment. Mr. Bab is requesting to meet with the board of selectmen, as you see in your agenda and also as you know, um, there is legal action still being taken here and the town administrator is recommending not to meet.
This is illegal action or is it settled?
He has an attorney. He has an attorney and we have an attorney and they are still talking.
Oh, so if the court stuff ain't settled then?
Something's not.
There are legal negotiations ongoing.
Yep. At this, this point, we're being advised not to meet until things are still resolved, correct?
Yeah.
I just thought everything was resolved.
I just thought everything was resolved.
No, he, 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 uh, went out and got a new attorney.
You need a motion on this or just a consensus?
I think a motion is needed.
Take a motion not to meet with Mr. Bab. Motion made by Mr. Whitman not to meet with Mr. Bab's request, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Holt, do I have any other further discussion? I'll poll the board, Ms. McDonald.
Yes.
Mr. Whitman.
Yes.
Mr. Rochelle.
Yes.
Mr. Holt.
Yes.
Mr. Whitworth, yes, votes in affirmative. Second one is from James Allison Brown waiver request.
I had a question on that.
Yes, sir, go right ahead.
Uh, I read through a lot of it, it's quite lengthy.
Yes.
Did the, uh, what's the, uh, opinion of the planning board?
Oh, I gotta stop you there, Virgil.
Hmm?
Step down off the board. Well, I know, but it's, it's family members, so just to keep it precise.
Okay. Do we have any input?
So wait a minute, I want to request that he steps off the board because this is a family member's. Does the board agree with that or not?
Yes.
Yeah.
Um, I, I might be able to answer.
Go right ahead.
Um, select, Mr. Holt, um. It's my understanding from the town planner that a waiver of this type for paving has never been done before. I don't have an opinion of the planning board, um, but that is the history. And that's why they were requested, this applicant was requested to provide all of this information.
All right.
Yeah.
Quite lengthy.
It would be a waiver of the highway regs which the selectmen approved years ago. That's why it would be coming to you and that, these are the regs that are followed through the planning process.
I guess my, my.
Would all be standards, uh, up to, uh, um, for a, uh, grade six road except for paving.
I can't answer that, I don't know.
That's what it looks like.
So I guess the best thing to do is we, we set up for our next meeting, we meet with the folks. They're requesting a meeting, I can understand it. Um, so it'd be up to the pleasure of the board not to meet with the Browns.
My second question is, who would we be meeting with?
The Browns.
The Browns?
Yes. We have the town planner here for our assistance too.
Okay, now they, they have an engineering firm.
Uh, through this before the planning board.
Yes. Will, will they be present? See.
I would assume so, but I, I don't know.
Yeah, yeah. See, uh. Uh, will they have a lawyer there?
I don't know.
Okay.
The way, one reason I understand it coming before is this is all family that are building on the same property. Two is once you put two buildings or two homes on the same right of way, you have to bring up the town's minimum road standards if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, right.
So they're asking for that waiver because it's all family. So they're treating it like a regular driveway, not a regular town maintained road. And I believe it could be the cost that's involved, this is why they do not want to go forward with this plus where they feel it's only family. And I'm just speaking here out of, out of what I'm, what I'm reading into this. That they help keep the cost down for the couple, that this, this will help them. Mr. Robbins does have his hand up back there, I don't know if you'd like, I have him come up or not?
Yes.
Yeah.
Mr. Robbins. Speaking on behalf of the road, highway agent, correct?
Yes. This is, this is not, this is not a very unusual request, actually. The reason is, is that we have all the shorts. Paper streets are there everywhere. We can't require them to pave them because they were subdivided prior to this. That particular piece of property has three lots on it already. How it got subdivided that way might have been prior to the seventies before the planning board already did that. So there was, to my understanding, there is a road approval that was up in there quite a ways. And from my understanding, they've been upgrading that section that was on paper route. So this is just a request to the board and not pave it. I, and, and I don't know what the legal standing to this is because there's already a three lot subdivision there. It wasn't just the two homes, it was actually three. So I don't know where the planning board stands on this, there's, there's big question marks everywhere on this one. But I see no reason. It'd be up to the board.
So this is just whether you want to hear the, these people or not.
Exactly.
When it does get scheduled before you, there's going to be input from as many, uh, professional sources as possible, whether they recommend or not.
Just saying, we have other roads that. My, my, my thoughts on it, when it comes to family building on the same land or subdivision or buying parcels off their family, but the right of way goes through, as long as it stays within the family, they should just be able to have a regular driveway or at least with dirt road with enough to have safety vehicles attend. Once the property is sold to a, outside the family member, that's when the town, that's when the road should be brought up to regular town standards. But this is why certain families have big lots of lands and hopefully their kids will come home, build on it, subdivide, build on it, but not thinking that the cost of a roadway will give them more money. Um, but, I mean, that's my feeling, if my kids ever want to come home, we have one driveway accessing all those lines. If it stayed in the family, I don't see why the town would not let them do that. But if a piece of that, one of those parcels are sold to a private, non-family member, then it would have to come into compliance with the town. Because then a point you might meet the density requirements, they come in, ask the town to take it over and it's not paved, that's why. But that's my feeling, I think we should meet with them, it's, they've been working on this issue for quite some time.
Yeah, it looks that way.
I think it's, I think we should, we should hear them.
Oh, sure.
We should meet with them.
We should have Jessica.
That's all we have to decide tonight.
We should have Jessica here.
I, that's why I recommended five to 15 minutes for you to meet.
For that, I also like to know if what Mr. Robbins just told us about three lots already in there and been pre-approved before this, if that's the case, I'd like to have that before us what he just stated.
Okay.
If Jessica can answer on that part.
Yep.
And that would be great. All in agreement?
Yes.
All right.
So you just need a motion to.
Oh, I need a motion to, uh, approve the request of James and Allison Brown for a waiver request. Do I have a second to my motion?
Yes.
Any further discussion? I'll poll the board, Mr. Whitman.
Yes.
Mr. Rochelle.
Yes.
Mr. Holt.
Yes.
Mr. Whitworth, yes, votes affirmative. Ms. McDonald, would you please join us, ma'am? Thank you. Moving on to non-public session, gentlemen, at this point, we have non-public tonight on the RSA 91-8, colon 3, paragraph 2, A and B. I guess I made that motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made of motion to go on non-public session in the RSA 91-8, colon 3, paragraph 2, A and B, second by Mr. Holt, any discussion? I'll poll the board, Mr. Holt.
Yes.
Mr. Rochelle.
Yes.
Mr. Whitman.
Yes.
Mr. McDonald.
Yes.
Mr. Whitworth, yes, votes in affirmative. Folks, we are in non-public session at this point, thank you for coming and we will return to public session here, sir.
Liz, is there a box of tissues in?
Good evening. We are back. The board of selectmen voted to come to lead non-public session at 8:35. We're now 8:37. We waited for Josh to come up and join us to turn us back on. So gentlemen, I need a motion to not to divulge the minutes of non-public session underneath A) Effectively adversely the reputation of any person other than a member of this board. Motion is made by Mr. Wentworth to not to divulge the minutes of non-public session underneath A) Effectively adversely the reputation of any person other than a member of this board. Any discussion? Mr. Rochelle.
Yes.
Mr. Holt.
Yes.
Mr. Virgil.
Yes.
Mr. Wentworth, yes. Vote is affirmative. Gentlemen, at this time, a limitation motion to adjourn the meeting at 8:38 p.m.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Rochelle to adjourn the selectmen's meeting at 8:38. My Mr. Whitman, any discussion? I'll poll the board. Mr. Holt?
Yes.
Mr. Rochelle.
Yes.
Mr. Wentworth, yes. Mr. McDonald.
Yes.
Mr. Whitman.
Yes.
Folks, thank you for attending tonight. We are adjourned now to 8:38 p.m. Enjoy your evening. See you next Monday night.